Welcome, 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 welcome. It's like I'm at Dodger Stadium. I love that. And welcome to the November 15th Board of Douglas County Commissioners Work Session. Today, we are having an update and discussion on the development of the Adapt Douglas County Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. This is a work session, so the information provided at this meeting is for discussion purposes only. We will not be taking any votes on the items on this meeting today. If, we don't take public comment during these meetings, but if you'd like to provide public comment, you're welcome to join us at our 5:30 business meeting where you can provide that public comment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kim Krenner Ritchie. That's me, sorry. I'll turn it over to Kim Krenner Ritchie, who's going to start our presentation.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Kim Krenner Ritchie, the Sustainability Manager for Douglas County. And I have my colleague here, Jamie Hoffling, who's our Sustainability Analyst. We're the staff leading development of this adaptation plan. And you're going to, Jamie will have time later to introduce herself and speak a lot about her contributions to this. But we are the staff leading this plan in partnership with multiple staff and organizations across the community. So this, we have a lot to share with you this afternoon, including getting all the way to the physical draft plan that's available for public input right now. But I wanted to take a minute to take us back to some origins and explain some of the background and initiation of the planning effort that we're bringing to you today. So Plan 2040 specifically requested that the Douglas County develop a plan that not just mitigated climate change, but also would assist the community in adaptation to the risks that we are facing. So it was very specific in its duality that we have a plan that could tackle both. And in 2021, MARK, the Mid-America Regional Council, passed a 10-county KC Climate Action Plan in which Douglas County was a participant. So that document and the impetus of Douglas County and City of Lawrence participating in that as regional leaders would be that we could be part of this network for regional change and regional movement in the direction of climate adaptation, but also to glean data on a regional level that we could bring into our process here to create a really localized plan for Douglas County. And so that is where we are today, is wanting to take that regional information and then bring it down to a really hyper-local level, a plan for our entire community in Douglas County that leads with community experience and takes into account assets and vulnerabilities and opportunities here we have. So very early in the process, we developed guiding values, and I say "we" as staff in the Douglas, the Lawrence Douglas County, as it was Sustainability Office at the time, and also community partners working in this space, some at the University of Kansas who have stayed with us in the process and joined our Steering Committee, and the Sustainability Advisor Board of Lawrence, who was also an initial partner in development of these values. And we have, we have continued to carry these values into our approach throughout our work. So really primarily at the root here of the values is making sure that we listen to the community first, making sure that we are hearing them correctly, coming back to the community with the information we're collecting and, and making sure that it's resonating. And we've done that multiple times through different methods of coming back to the community. Making sure that we are taking time to consider how people are experiencing climate change in the community and having them be centered in, in the listening that we're doing, particularly reaching out to groups who may be experiencing that a little bit more, such as those who are working outside or those who are working in human services and serving those who are more vulnerable to some of these stresses. Relying on the expertise that is among the staff at the governments and organizations across the county, and then making the conversation relevant. So connecting climate change to people's everyday lives, and we did that through a lot of our outreach process. So coming now to our timeline, we initially launched this, this planning process in the fall of 2021 with two outreach methods. So I, we very intentionally started with, with the community, as I said. Some planning processes do choose to dive right into the greenhouse gas emissions, and those are important, and we did include those in our planning effort, but we didn't start there. We wanted to first see how the community was experiencing climate change, what, what was really causing stressors for them and what opportunities that they were seeing that, that could work and be feasible. So we started with a community survey and then also a partnership on employment of 10 community coordinators that witnessed the community, did interviews and collected those climate experience narratives. At the end of that year, we did have a structural change in the Lawrence Douglas County Sustainability Office where our, our governments and our partnership, we decided to divide resources and pursue our respective priorities in the sustainability area while remaining in partnership in a multitude of ways. And Douglas County at that, at that time saw the opportunity to lead, continue to lead in this climate planning effort from a countywide perspective. So changing the scope slightly of a Lawrence, an unincorporated Douglas County Climate Plan to an all of, an entire scope of Douglas County Plan, and including in, in this vision, any community that wanted to join us in it, really believing that we could, you know, that the challenges that we face with climate change do not stop at anyone's community's borders. We are all in this together, and if we can find the commonality and the common priorities as we're working toward these things together, then we're going to have, we're going to have more success. And so that was the approach we began to take. In looking at those two initial community outreach phases, we did realize that if this was going to be a community, a countywide plan, we had not necessarily heard from all the geographic areas of our community. So we set about correcting that, holding focus groups in different geographic areas of the county, and also reaching out specifically to groups that either we wanted to hear from that direct experience with climate change, or had come up in the previous, had been elevated as priorities for their knowledge and experience and partnership in the previous outreach round, and specifically speaking of the Indigenous community, which was elevated and highlighted numerous times in the narratives and interviews as another group that we should closely involve throughout the process. So now, well, fast forward, we have done a lot of planning. We've talked to a lot of people. We've collected a lot of data toward our greenhouse gas inventory. But again, that came slightly after the priority of the community first. So in forming this plan, we have not only layers of community outreach, a first countywide greenhouse gas inventory, taking into account the footprint of the majority of our emissions from all of our utilities and resources, consulting other community plans that have been adopted within Douglas County and by our other governments, consulting other community plans from peer communities who have done climate action and adaptation work, and then relying again on the staff, the staff work of all the departments that, the departments and expertise that we hope will, will be partners in implementing this when we get to that stage. So here are just some examples of community outreach materials that we used, understanding, I'm sorry, just pulling back together some of those values that I mentioned, connecting climate to everyday lives and listening first to the community. Speaking of listening to the community, I want to go back to this slide for just one minute and elevate just one theme that continued to emerge in our listening, and that was a lot of seeking interest on where was this plan going to weigh in on large-scale renewable energy projects? So we, we heard from a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different perspectives from, you know, the, the range that can exist on something like this, and wanting to know, what does this mean, what does this plan mean for those? What is, where does this plan going to take a stance on that? And you're going to find that this, this plant doesn't mandate or ban or prescribe any one energy source or any one project. What it does support is, is decarbonization, and there are multiple ways to do that. And this plan has hopefully laid out a creative, adaptive options to do that, so that different parts of the community can find the most appropriate and unique ways to do that for them on a small scale, and then on a large scale, you know, those decisions can be, can be taken. Excuse me. I'm so sorry, I lost my train of thought. I think just coming back to this being a plan that's intended to take adaptive approaches to really hard issues and, and not having one way to do that and taking multiple partners. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Jamie to talk about our, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, Jamie Hoffling, to talk about our greenhouse gas inventory.
There we go. Okay, make it green. There we go. All right, the echoing in the room is so challenging, so it's going to take me a bit to get used to that. All right, so drum roll. This is the greenhouse gas inventory you guys have all been waiting for. It's our first countywide greenhouse gas inventory that's been done for Douglas County. Lawrence has had some done before, but this is the first one on a county level. And it's not just government, it's, it's the entire community, and it's broken down into three different, or all these different sectors. The top three are residential, transportation, and commercial. Each of those sectors makes up about a third of our overall emissions. We have a total of just about 1.4 million metric tons of carbon dioxide that we put out into the atmosphere in just the year 2021. So that was our baseline year, and we want to look ahead. Let's get it to the next slide. So we're looking ahead into what will happen if we do nothing at all. We just let business as usual take place. Business as usual doesn't mean nothing will happen, it just means that there's no additional local action. So this chart kind of illustrates what would happen. You see our baseline on the far left, that's 2021, emissions broken down by each of those sectors. Business as usual is if you look at energy efficiency standards that just kind of take place at the federal level, other industry standards that do change over time, they're always improving. And then also there's just some decarbonization plans already that the utility companies have in, have in, in store. So those are all taken into account in business as usual. The far right, where the emissions come down even lower to the 38.5% from baseline, that's what the climate action that we're proposing in this plan. Those are things like rooftop solar potential. We looked at every, the entire rooftop solar for Douglas County, so every roof that could potentially have solar on it, and took a 10% reading off of that and found how much reduction that would take us to. So that, that's just an example of how we brought down our emissions for 2030. These are just approximations, so they're, even though they are based on science, they're not perfect. So, so take them for what they, what they are. They help us model and kind of see what would happen if we took no action and what would happen if we did take some action, and that's what we're proposing here. All right, so now we get to look, this is the real drum roll. This is when you get to actually look at some parts of the plan. So we have, the plan broken down into four different sectors, leading with energy, because energy really is where we can make the biggest improvement on our emissions. And as Kim mentioned multiple times, that this is not just a mitigation plan, so we don't want to get too stuck in just those greenhouse gas emissions. That's just one indicator, there are several others. When we get into implementation, we are going to start looking at other performance indicators to go beyond just greenhouse gas emissions. So keep that in mind as you hear about these. We heard a lot from the community about energy, as you can imagine, as we're talking about climate change. The primary concern that I heard, and I think our team heard, was the increasing cost of utility, utility costs, and the burden that that poses on families and businesses. And then the lack of energy efficiency, which is a strategy, if you have energy efficiency in your building, you can cut your energy costs just by means of reducing your consumption. So that's what we're trying to do with the very first goal, is address that very thing. We want to reduce the overall energy consumption, at the same time, try to switch to more renewable sources. And then our second goal is more at the statewide level, we're trying to look at, or at the grid level, what can we do to improve the resilience overall in our energy sector? Let's see, what are some other things to point out here? I think we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. Mobility is our section, our, our second sector that we looked at, and this one, we had a lot of plans that we could go, we could align with. Douglas County and Lawrence in particular has a lot of plans addressing our mobility, so how we get around in the community, and ways to transition to more low-carbon modes of transportation. So we have a lot of good company here. We have a lot of interest in this section, in this sector, and it's also one of the leading sectors of emissions as well. So you can see there why we would spend time on this one. When we reached out to the community, we heard a lot about the stress on workers and the, just the infrastructure they're trying to maintain. So if you think about our county and our city employees, they have a lot of work to do during extreme weather events, particularly dealing with ice on roads, that's a big one, and that that poses a lot of stress on them as workers. We heard that they really wanted to be acknowledged and appreciated for the skills that they were bringing. That was a big one that we heard when we did our outreach to, or when we did our focus groups with the work, outdoor workers. And then, of course, there's just the vehicle pollution in general that our cars create. So we are looking at goals that will enable and make it more accessible, those low-carbon sources of, of transportation. And then also just building resilience into our transportation, so dealing with stormwater management and putting in green infrastructure using nature-based solutions to help us mitigate the flood, the floodwaters and the stormwater. Okay, next slide. And Kim, if I can take it back for you on this one, this, this is one that Kim spent a lot more time on. She spent time on all of these, but living systems is one that I wanted to have her talk about in particular. That's okay.
So living systems encompasses areas such as water quality, soil health, our agricultural sector, and biodiversity. We heard a lot of concern among our experts we consulted with, community members, about the lost biodiversity and what, what that was looking like right here in Douglas County. We also heard, as well as understand, that a lot of our landscape provides very valuable ecosystem services to us. So a lot of our living system is looking at that coexistence between our human systems and the natural environment. And in protecting some of the biodiversity, some of the landscapes, we are also building up our own resilience as a community. Things like floodplains, soil quality, air quality, those things that serve us every day and that can be taken for granted are things that not only help us in emergencies, but they also can help us in mitigation efforts such as sequestration through soil and tree canopy and other green space in native prairie. Our sequestered, our sequestration data, which we have noted on the slide, accounts for about 10% of our overall emissions, the potential of sequestration there, that's just measuring trees and our current trees. So maintaining those is very important. This is not a factor that we can take for granted and assume that that's going to continue. So maintaining green space is important for this goal area, but also investigating with the sequestration potential of our other landscapes. I mean, these are opportunities that we can tap into and continue to build health and opportunity in our community. So those are some highlights from the living systems, and I look forward to discussing that further with your questions.
Yeah, and that reminded me when Kim was talking about the carbon sequestration, that that also showed up in our greenhouse gas inventory that I forgot to talk about on that previous slide, but that is taken into account with that 38.5%. That's if we were to maintain about 20% of tree coverage. There are opportunities, of course, to, to grow that, and there's also opportunities to decrease that. So the recommendation of the plan is to maintain that. I will say that when we did our open house, I did hear from multiple people, they wanted to know, why wouldn't we increase that? So there, there is a lot of interest in increasing our tree canopy, but also vegetation in general, knowing that we have prairies here, so, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of my question. So your urban tree cover is one thing, and then rural tree cover gets complicated because this is, you know, prairie ecosystem or would have been, and we have quite a bit of tree cover, including some, you know, pre, we have some pre-existing like hardwood forests and such also in Douglas County. But what does that look like to increase tree cover? And how is that, where is that healthy and where is that less healthy? Just a conversation probably to still have.
Yeah, so the recommendation that we have in this plan, and I think Open Space will address even more of that, but in this plan, what we're primarily looking at is dealing, helping us build more resilient transportation, modes of transportation. So creating more tree canopy for the protection from heat islands when you're walking and biking down the street or wheeling down the street, or standing at a bus stop, waiting for a bus to come. So that's primarily what we're looking at in this, in this plan. And a strategy that we don't have in here yet, or that might show up in implementation is what could we do to better look at the, the benefits from other vegetation beyond trees? So our third-party consultant that worked with us on, on our greenhouse gas inventory was only able to do tree canopy with their tools, but we did talk about that, and they agreed that that would be of interest to look beyond just tree canopy, so.
Especially interested in how we get at the capacity for regenerative agriculture to sequester carbon in our soils where it should have been in the first place, but we've lost a lot of it due to some of our agricultural practices. And I don't know who models that or who helps with that, but it would be nice to kind of have that as something that we get some community partners engaged with to figure out how do we set some goals for regenerative agriculture? How do we measure those and how do we implement it?
Yes, and those do straddle two sections of this plan. Regenerative agriculture, carbon sequestration for soil protection, and climate smart agriculture shows up in living systems, it kind of straddles living systems and the next section, thrive. Yeah, so we do have strategies in there and partnerships, potential partnerships on that, too. In fact, one of our steering committee members works with Douglas County Conservation and is very interested, and does have programs for both climate smart and regenerative ag. So thriving community is the next, the next one. Okay, that's that one, thank you. All right, so we recognize with, with this particular, particular chapter, what we're trying to cover is recognizing that climate change is going to affect the way that we thrive as a community. We want to both acknowledge that and address it in this section. So this one does not have any mitigation strategies necessarily in it. It's mostly around public health and really looking at what does it mean to foster, develop a resilient community as a whole. So that encompasses the economy, we're looking at how we deal with our waste, we're looking at our food production, we're looking at our preparedness for our climate hazards, including community support. So things like CERT, the CERT program that our Douglas County Emergency Management offers, Community Emergency, I always, I'm actually a CERT volunteer, and I continuously forget what the acronym stands for. Does anybody know? I haven't the plan, but.
Community Emergency Response Team.
I always want to say Rescue, Response Team, yes. So, so really building on that, and that is something that Douglas County Emergency Management is already planning to do, and with this plan, we hope to really help further those goals, too. And then we've been working with extensively with public health on really assessing what those, what our local vulnerabilities are to climate change, knowing that we kind of have a general broad sense of that nationwide and globally, but we really want to look at what do we have here? What are our vector-borne disease risk, risk that we're looking at? What is, what is happening with our air quality? How can renewable energy help? And some people are interested in looking at the facts around renewable energy and health, really checking those out. So that's what we're trying to do with this section here, and, oh, we, I want to mention that we have a psychological, we have a clinical psychologist on our steering committee who's very interested in the climate impacts on our psychological impacts of climate change, and has really helped us keep that front and center this entire time. So it's been wonderful to see all the advancements happening around mental health in our community already, and how can we continue to further that as well? So I think that's it for the, the peek into the actual plan, then we have our next steps that I'll talk about next. Oops, there we go. All right, so this kind of builds on the previous slide that showed our progress to date, takes you up to where we are right now. We are in that public draft review phase. We have the first public draft out there. It's available digitally, and then we're also providing open houses. We've had two already. We have two more, one in Baldwin City and one in Udora, that are going to happen later this month and early next month. We have, you can see in the pictures, we have boards that we put up where people can tour the plan and ask questions. We were well-staffed at this one that was at the Train Depot. When was, oh my gosh, that was November 13th, that just happened. And we had wonderful, we had about 30 people show up at that one or more, I can't remember exactly how many were there, but it was well-attended, and we had a lot of really good feedback at that particular open house, and we look forward to the next two. And then later in December, early January, we'll be incorporating that feedback all along, and we'll, we'll be looking at implementation and working with our staff advisors and our steering committee to really best incorporate that feedback that we receive. We'll come back to you guys, we're planning in January, February, to give you an update on our process and kind of what we're expecting for, asking you for adoption, which we anticipate will happen in February or March.
And folks that can't make it to one of the open houses, there's also an open survey, is that right?
That's right.
How would people find that?
Yeah, so the survey is on the website. If you go to the story map, Douglas County, can't remember the shortened URL offhand, but maybe we can drop it in the chat in a moment. But if they go to the website, even if you just Google search Douglas County, Douglas County Climate Action, it will come up, and that will get you to the plan, and the plan actually has a QR code that takes you to the survey. It's also all over our website, so, yeah, it should be very accessible. If it isn't, then you can always email climateaction@douglascountyks.org, and I can send it to you directly. I did want to mention our next steps as well, that we have equity considerations that we're also going to be adding. We have a consultant that we're working with, a local consultant who is helping us build those out. We'll also have performance indicators that go beyond those GHD targets that I talked about earlier, and we'll have a list of potential partners that will kind of help lead us into implementation. Thank you. Kim, I'll pass it back to you.
Yeah, so just one, one final closing note on that note of implementation, or rather, just the note of, of next steps. We're excited to hear more from the community throughout the next two or three weeks. Excited to see how that improves and shapes the plan, to bring you an update on that. But we're also really looking forward to getting to work. And, well, we've been working, but the hands-on work, the hands-on work of implementation and action and adaptation, and we're already thinking about what that looks like. In fact, we have a question in our open survey right now, asking people, how do they think the community should be involved in this plan going forward? So we're looking forward to hearing what those ideas are. But just wanted to let you know, Commissioners, that, that we as staff are very eager to really dig into this. We are already looking at the relationships that we're building through the process that will, you know, that will continue to be built as we approach projects and figure out, you know, who, the expertise, the leadership, the need, the, the members of our community most impacted, looking at where the funding opportunities are, and, and doing, you know, prioritization, prioritization exercises with our fellow staff and, and really moving into this. We know that there's some areas that we already can pinpoint as opportunities. For example, there was a rooftop, a federal rooftop solar opportunity for, specifically for affordable or lower-income housing, and that we did not apply for directly, but will be distributed at the state level. And so that's an opportunity that we may be able to pursue to bring a type, another type of decarbonization, one of many, to rooftops here in Douglas County, particularly for members of our community that, or for any member of our community to help save on bills and decarbonize our local supply. So anyway, we're excited to get started.
I know you've had a lot of conversations in the community, and I'm going to kind of tag on one with the City of Lawrence, and I know other, all of our city
tag on one with the city of Lawrence, and I know other, all of our city governments within Douglas County and Douglas County government have been involved with the process, too. But specifically with Lawrence doing the land development code update, are there intersections with that and are those conversations happening? Because this process is, is ongoing, but they're getting close to, I think, a final product. Are we close enough or have enough of the right people in the room for those conversations that will, will tag on to that work?
So we have had a couple interactions with the land development code committee specific to alignments in our planning efforts. So we've shared drafts with one another. We've talked about areas of overlap and opportunity, largely wanting to make sure that our, both of our plans mutually leave room for each other's goals and each other's vision and, and that nothing that we're creating is going to create a barrier or an obstacle for us getting where we both want to be. So some of the areas that we've talked about with overlap have to do with community agricultural production, lots of questions about solar and how that works into a community or the possibility of how that works in the land development code, conversations about floodplain development, conversations about parking management. So these are the types of topics that we're talking about alignment with.
I just want to highlight in the transportation, I think the chapter is on mobility, actually. It talks a little bit about, if you want to reduce, the goal is to reduce the number of miles traveled and create infrastructure. And I just want to highlight your thinking about regional transportation networks. Is that correct?
You want to highlight our regional transportation?
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have a regional transportation network now for what you're talking about. And this would be your suggestion and what you're hearing from the community is we need one? Is that correct?
Yes, it would definitely be to build that out and be exploring that as, as a way to advance and, and make it more feasible for people to, yeah, use other modes of transportation regionally.
Are there examples of other communities with our sort of spread, you know, and, and level of density that have done similar things? I mean, when I think about a regional transportation, and I want to be clear, I love that idea, but I'm trying to imagine how it works. Do you have other communities that you've looked at with our level of density that would have something like that?
I haven't. Have you come across some examples of our level of density? I have looked at a lot of other communities that have done it, but not our level of density.
So I would, I would say the same, not to that specificity of comparing communities in regional transit, but I would also point out, this is one area where we're certainly not leading alone. MPO is, and the Transportation 2050, these are models and partners that we're working in alignment with and looking for opportunities amongst our planning processes to enhance and further the goals that we have mutually. And so this would be one where there would be a very first stop into doing that research, sharing what they already know and moving forward.
To piggyback off that a little bit, I was curious while reading this, if, you know, because of our designation in the KC Climate Action Plan, whether or not there'd been ongoing communication or coordination with counties in the KC region, other counties that were included in that action plan specifically and what their efforts around mobility and transportation. You know, because when you say regional, Commissioner Kelly, I'm really thinking about a multi-county area in terms of the sort of scalability and efficiency and potential for impact when it comes to a more, a better network and accessibility to that network. So I'm just curious if there's been any continued conversation or any opportunities you see in front of you to coordinate with those other surrounding counties specifically in that Climate Action Plan, the KC Metro one?
Well, that's a great idea. I love the idea of working, going to that KC Climate Unit to talk about regional transit. We haven't continued, or sorry, we haven't had that specific conversation about transit. We have had a couple, excuse me, a number of conversations as the plan has moved forward. We are not part of the mark, MPO implementation area. So some of the conversations they've had have had to do with distribution of funds, which we're not part of that pie. But the, the knowledge sharing and the looking towards the larger vision, those are the types of conversations we continue to have.
I wanted to make sure we elevate how awesome this community outreach was for this plan. I, I think it's probably unprecedented, the, the work that went into trying to capture voices, because we know it's, some people, it's easy to hear from because they kind of understand or their schedules work with how we do public input and public meetings and things like that. And this went way, way beyond that intentionally to try and capture those other voices. And I really like that there was a, you know, a generational focus to try and catch, you know, seniors and their, you know, needs and vulnerabilities, and also younger people and their understanding and their way of evaluating and speaking about climate change. I think of my generation as being kind of the first to think about climate change in terms of whether or not to have children. But I think the next generation really kind of thinks about things in terms of climate grief. I think that is, you know, something that did come out in like this, these narratives that you captured from that additional outreach that went to, you know, person to person where the 10 people were hired to kind of go out into the community and seek out those voices. And so I really appreciate that work and I appreciate capturing those voices into this process because it is hard for us to hear from younger demographics for county policy. And it's something that I think we care about and we continue to work on. And I, I just appreciate that that, that work was done. I think that those surveys are also capturing some, some voices from, you know, some high school students that are putting their input in, in that direction. So anything that you've learned from that, that we can help to use that, not only did people input to Climate Action and that Adaptation Plan, but we can also leverage that into other, other areas where we need those voices in policy. So just want to kind of just say a big thank you for doing that work and capturing some of those voices.
Yeah, I have heard numerous times how unprecedented this is, this approach that we took, especially leading with the community voices over the greenhouse gas inventory, for example, and waiting to write our actions until after we had actually heard what people, how they were experiencing it. So I did hear that numerous, on numerous accounts. One of the things I did hear from the youth when we did the youth open house was just how much relief it was to know that there's, that we're taking a leadership role as a county on climate action because they were deeply, they're deeply concerned about the future. So, yeah.
One thing I wanted to flag and just highlight and praise, say that I'm excited about is the section that you had about co-benefits and just like applying that lens in addition to the focus on equity and vulnerability. I just appreciate that lens and want to encourage that like as action steps sort of develop and tangible ideas and recommendations come to us or to other governments or to other groups, thinking about, just really remembering to always apply that lens of what are all the possible co-benefits or sort of not obvious things. You know, we might be talking about one very specific focus, policy opportunity, but what are the implications of that and the possibilities of it beyond just what the sort of headline of it is, so to speak. So I just wanted to flag that I appreciated that paragraph and want to encourage still applying that lens. I was also just curious and I, you know, Kim, I heard you say like lots of ideas are sort of budding and in development for opportunities that are sort of right in front of us or that we can see and, and work towards. Can you give any examples of like policy opportunities around what we can do to regulate commercial businesses, for example, in terms of the, you know, part of it is building regulations and that was, you know, we've recently, relatively recently updated building code on a countywide level. And naturally, some of those industry standards will change things. But I guess I'm just curious if there's anything that stands out top of mind, where there are opportunities to really address on a local level, how to regulate or incentivize, you know, both, both and options, commercial and residential. But, you know, when I think about commercial energy and the potential to really have a larger impact, for example, it would take fewer businesses, fewer commercial buildings perhaps, for example, to have rooftop solar on them that might be able to start tipping the scale, whereas cumulatively, you'd have to have a lot of residential, you know, depending on square footage. So that was just something I was thinking about and where to zero in on some opportunities to regulate or incentivize things like, I don't really think solar panels are a thing we can regulate, but, you know, maybe there are some incentives around that. So that was a rambly thought. I guess it was mostly thoughts out loud, but I really hope for explicit policy recommendations in the future around, for us to consider implementing like that.
So Commissioner Reed, like one of the things that this got me thinking, I was so happy to see all of that about rooftop solar in there. But, you know, we've had asks for public incentives and one of the things we offer is job, you know, jobs as an economic development. But I, I'd like to see us consider some policy around some of those public incentives involving rooftop solar, you know, that, that may be, it may be an adjustment, but we're going to have to work with the city because many of these things begin at the city level and then come to us. But I think there's a lot of potential there in the benefit that is for the entire community. And it's more than jobs. I had a question since we're on renewable energy on a section here, that we have heard, we have had others who joined us in this space that said, we're going to need not only rooftop solar, not only small-scale renewables, but also large-scale renewables. And I think it's on page 19, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to assume, but I want to get some clarity around that it mentions there that commercial and industrial operations should, should be utilizing paved and building surfaces over green space when feasible and effective. And I think it's interesting that if one of your outcomes was lowering energy costs, that we would make that dividing line. Because I, there are some, I think, who would, could use this language here to say that we're saying nothing in green space. And I want to give you an opportunity to clarify that because, as you know, we have some large-scale commercial solar things and commercial wind possibilities on the horizon. Was the intention there to discourage anything or, or my understanding is we're going to need it all? Is that making sense?
That does make sense. And the intention was not, was not never no green space. It was if there was an option that on a built surface and it was feasible, would be more desirable than using green space. But this is the first public draft and if that point needs clarity and refinement, then I'm, I'm hearing that. And that's something that we can reexamine. This, I will say that particular point is also something that came some, from advice from some of the advisory, advisory boards and committees that we've been consulting with of that concern of, of green space versus bill, if there's a choice. But it's not always that easy, so.
So as we look at goals for decarbonizing energy and also reducing costs and all of those things, does it fit to just look at not using green space, but instead using paved space and rooftop, including the, the cost factor? Is that, is that feasible to hit targets and goals and kind of looking at that 2050 time range without any renewable, utility scale renewables for Douglas County? Loaded question.
Maybe while they're thinking about that, I think maybe clarifying some pieces around. So our energy providers in this area have also set decarbonization goals. Our greenhouse gas inventory information assumes they're going to hit those greenhouse gas inventory goals, and they may not feel the same way we do about built space versus green space. So I guess I just want to sort of, I, I think that's part of it is that what is our role as a county in, you know, obviously we can permit land uses, but we're also not a utility. So I guess I just, I don't know if that's helpful at all, but I think this plan was built under the assumption that Evergy is going to proceed with meeting its, its stated decarbonization goals.
I appreciate the clarification. And so the, like, the Evergy goals are based on by default, you know, utility scale projects because they are the utility versus the, the goals maybe within county policy that have more impact on smaller scale and within the city and within the rural areas. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Well, what, what Sarah said was correct, that we did use what Evergy has publicly put out as their decarbonization goals as a factor in our greenhouse gas inventory. And I'm not sure I understood the follow-up question. I'm sorry. Did you?
Well, I was wondering if you were, were you talking about the difference between rooftop solar or distributed generation and utility scale? Is that maybe the origin of the question? Because I also was having a little trouble.
Sure. Yeah, just trying to determine like what, what piece is ours that fits here and what piece is kind of understanding that our utilities are also bringing something to the table that still would have an impact on Douglas County land, a huge impact on Douglas County land, but that may be already part of the assumptions that are working into the, the plan here, is that, as, as a utility?
I guess that's getting, if I can just add on to that, I guess that's getting to my question was if we are taking into account the things that will happen if we do nothing, right, on that first set of charts, right? And then we say there are also actions that we need to do locally, right? When I read that statement, it sort of sounds like there may be things that we want to do locally that were contrary to that if we stay with business as usual. So that number could go up even though locally we're trying to go down. So let me be real plain here, right? So if we're discouraging industrial renewable development in green space, right, but we're saying it needs to be on rooftops, right, we could hamper those companies making those gains that we're assuming are part of the plan just by the way we've written the language. And I think.
I think, I think that, I get what you're trying to say, and I think that's why we do need to clarify that point.
Right.
To, to be clear that, I, I think what we were trying to say is I think sometimes, I don't know, they're going to kick me if I'm wrong here, but I don't know that all of our energy providers are looking at unique situations. I think they're going to look at the least easiest cost option to do. Sometimes on a built environment, it's, so I think our hope was to push them to be more innovative, that in addition, because we, you know, it, they're, they're going to look at green space solutions. I think that it is a yes and it is a both conversation, but let's not just stop with green space solutions. Let's look at built environment solutions as well. Is that, is that a fair?
The as well.
It's as well. Yeah. So maybe, so as we're thinking about how to refine that language point.
Yeah, and let's, and also just to clarify that the goal one strategy two that we're referring to is intended to be about buildings. So we're not necessarily thinking at the utility scale, but if, a little bit going back to Commissioner Reed's question about incentivizing businesses or commercial, how does that, is, is there a role? how does that, is there a role there for distributed generation within their operations, within their siting? And if so, do they have an option to consider what that design is? So that kind of goes with the, the building concept. But if that's getting lost in the tiers here, we can clarify that.
I just think it'd be something good for you to talk about in the, as you're continuing to work that. Because I think there's a twist of language there that we may want to be, put a finer point on. And I do want to say it also talks about, you know, coming up with good regulations that honor those. So I think some may listen to it and our newspaper friends may choose just the right quote here. But I think what's important to say is to say that, you know, it's not an either or. It's trying to find the balance of impacts to our open space, our green spaces, and reduce the harm as much as we can through regulation, knowing that we also have to address some of these renewable energy goals.
I also flagged that language about, you know, the protection part of the regulations. But the, the regulations were formed, both the solar that are finished in the wind that are kind of in progress, were formed to provide protections within the possibility of the need for those. I mean, that will play out yet, but not just protection to protect, to prevent, but protect what needs to be protected if and when a project were to be considered for Douglas County. So I don't want it to be an entirely protection because that, those conversations, I think, are still important for our community.
And that is consistent with the solar regulations, with wildlife corridors, with minimal grading, with agrovotaiacs. So that kind of yes and conversation, how can we be the best stewards of the land as possible while also doing renewable energy, I think is an example of how we've tried to do both of those pieces.
Right. Including the painful but important conversation that was, you know, throughout the solar regs conversation about what to do with prime agricultural soils because that is a competing value there. And it was determined within that ad hoc group, determined unanimously within the planning commission and unanimously amongst the county commission at that time, that, that it was a necessity that those be considered, that those soils be considered for those projects because without them, we have no space for those projects without massive grading and erosion, which was not allowed within those regs. So those are just hard competing values that our community has to wrestle with. But, but, but important conversations to have.
I do want to go back to that point. We were talking about buildings. You know, I know the catalyst program, which is an economic development incentive program the City of Lawrence has, does give additional points in their analysis if the building is built to lead standards. So I do think those are some opportunities for those kinds of things where we can look at, how are we incentivizing development in the community to be as sustainable as possible? So those are some, I think those are some things we're already doing and then we can figure out how to expand upon.
Another question I have is, so I'm somewhat familiar with the programs that exist on a local and state level for this, but I don't know that they're widely known by a lot of residents necessarily, organizations, but I'm interested in like residential mitigation opportunities. So weatherization programs in particular, what come to mind, I mean, it's a couple of different things. One, it's thinking about, you know, the City of Lawrence's land development and building code is one thing we've talked about and their rental licensing program and code enforcement through the rental licensing program around standards that meet the building codes that go towards health and safety and efficiency, right? And so that's one thought I had. And then also just how do we maximize or fill in the gaps of access to weatherization opportunities? You know, focusing on low-income folks, of course, because they tend to have the highest energy bills by the logic of our system. And so, and there's just a lack of access and opportunity to address those repairs, updates, especially if they're in a rental situation and don't really have the power to do that. So I'm interested in learning what opportunities and sort of maybe pilot programs exist in other communities for how to really beef up that sort of access to those programs and knowledge of those programs. And if there are barriers to that, such as, you know, there's not enough skilled labor for some of those jobs and the ability, how do we talk to our community partners about increasing that, right? The sort of skilled labor. And I heard you, one of you mentioned skilled labor, you know, in terms of our public works department just very specifically and like the, what it takes to maintain our roads and the, the stress and the increased anxiety and the increased skill needed for that. So those are just things that are on my mind that I, well, first of all, I just appreciate that they're included, that those things are mentioned and talked about and come through in the stories that were gathered and the community engagement sessions because it is a holistic view. And it is thinking about what the, you know, very real tangible human impacts are, but also the opportunities to change that. And that's an example for me of one of the, there's many co-benefits, right? Like we can help reduce greenhouse emissions and also help reduce utility costs. And, you know, make a healthier, safer community for low-income renters in our community, for example.
Yeah, that is an area that we have so much potential for partnership. Weatherization, energy efficiency, skilled labor. We, we've included a lot of those potential partners on our steering committee to be able to start those conversations while we're building the plan. And have already looked at, Kim mentioned earlier, solar for all. And it actually goes beyond just rooftop solar. So there'll be a program that'll be available to us, a grant that will be available to us to fund not only rooftop solar, but also weatherization to help those, they have recognized that you want to start first with weatherization and then build out your potential for energy consumption. So, so yeah, that's just one, one program.
And the other, another additional co-benefit of that is the education and awareness piece, right? Because, you know, while the benefit on the surface is I'm going to have a less drafty house and lower utility costs, I'm also going to learn, that's an opportunity to learn about other ways to achieve efficiency and to do energy conservation on just a day-to-day basis that I think helps, you know, if we infuse sort of education and awareness and nuggets of knowledge and all of those opportunities, to me, that's what really like creates a sea change over time is for focusing on where to weave those opportunities in.
I love that. And that is definitely one that we will put in for a co-benefit in that section. That's great. Thank you.
I know there are a lot of opportunities that came through the Inflation Reduction Act that did not exist before for municipalities and nonprofits to take advantage of, energy credits that they couldn't before. So making sure that that information gets out in the public. I think there's an education aspect so that organizations that had written, kind of written those off because they didn't, they weren't eligible before and now they are, making sure that they know those are opportunities. And also what opportunities there might be, and I don't know, for not just community scale solar with some, you know, shared resources, especially I'm thinking of some of our affordable housing and mixed income neighborhoods that are getting planned like around Castle on the Curve with tenants to homeowners and such. The ability to, to pool some of those resources so that there's access to renewable energy onsite for, for affordable housing. But also the idea of a shared geothermal, if that's a possibility, just especially if there are nearby green spaces that belong to City of Lawrence or, or the county or another landowner that could be partnering with that to try and, you know, create, create some opportunities for something new and some new partnerships that are more energy efficient and, and also take advantage of some of these funds that might be available.
Any other further comments or questions, Commissioners?
I have one final comment. I would, throughout reading this plan and, well, most days of the past couple of weeks, honestly, I have had somebody on my heart and mind and just want to take a moment to acknowledge Makoko Abigail Jones, who was a big part of the beginning of this and recently passed away suddenly. And I just, I think that her spirit, her energy is very evident to me. And she was an early leader in this and I just want to honor that.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Excellent work. I really appreciate all the engagement on it. And I agree with Commissioner Willie, this is sort of an unprecedented level of community engagement and in some ways, unique in the way that we did this around the narratives and the storytelling that that's, that isn't what I've experienced before. We didn't do things like that in Plan 2040. So thank you for thinking differently about that. And I appreciate the work that you still have to do and we will look forward to an upper date in January, February. And with that, we will take a break and we'll be back at 5:30 for our business meeting.